Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's January 2nd of 2025. Get that out. Welcome, everyone. Let's begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands our commission under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We definitely have a quorum. We've got Sherman, and we've got Andy, and we've got Dana and Howard and Mary Beth. And Norm as an alternate.
So there were only seven of us, right? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Seven.
Okay, Norm is a regular?
Yep.
And?
Because we're missing Jerry and we're missing.
Okay, approval of the agenda?
Both approve the agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, public comment? No public here. New business. We were hoping to connect with Mr. LaVictor. But apparently that's not going to happen this evening. We'll try again in three weeks. Bill? Okay. So he has, he owns several parcels of land and he's hoping two, including his own.
No, he has a lot there. I don't know.
He's hoping to sell one of those and he's running into some issues that we thought it would be best to clear up with this group in person or by Zoom phone. So we'll move down to the Velco Thomas subdivision and I made copies of the two maps or surveys that Jim Goss had sent along with his letter. I think I've read this about 10 times and I may understand what's needed, which I don't think is very much. There was some action and some division permit in 2010. And then in 2022, that was changed a bit. But the only thing on file right now is Exhibit A. Is that correct, Bill? And they're offering to do a Mylar, which would essentially be Exhibit B, which would show all of the changes. They mostly pertain to lots one and four on the north end.
I always thought A is correct. Velco did theirs. They took that. But I don't, I
Right?
I couldn't figure out like in the B they give, it shows two basically being like all that frontage.
On Post Road.
Post Road.
I don't know if that was right.
I almost agree with you. Initially, it was just four lots.
Yep.
And then what happened later was Velco took, picked up another piece. In fact, when Velco picked it up, did we do a subdivision or boundary line adjustment? How did we handle that?
We did a subdivision. They didn't want a subdivision, but we asked them to go through that process.
So my recollection was, and I can't remember what we went through, but I do remember the process. And they needed, because they had almost a landlocked little piece, which is, I guess, two on here, on the original one. And we had to give them a right-of-way to cross, I think it was one. But what I'm seeing on here is I have, in the upper, if we're looking at the northern part, to the right of parcel one, there looks like there's a rectangle, a small box next to the entryway to the reserve center. And what I mean by that is this.
That's the access road, isn't it? The access?
Yeah, this access road. And for some reason, I thought we had to do something with a right-of-way. But what's this rectangular box that doesn't seem to be in one or in two? Or was that actually part of two originally? Because it's all marked out in red.
It's hard to see.
Yeah.
Really difficult.
It is very difficult to see now. So my recollection also was, I don't remember ever, but I could have missed a meeting, that would be reasonable, ever moving towards the proposed number two. And maybe we never did do that. But that would be at least a boundary line adjustment. Because parcel one, which I think is current and approved, I was having difficulty getting to, from where we are, although I had a question about that rectangle up there, to number two, because I don't ever remember having
Our parcel map, Tom's parcel map would probably clearly show it.
Yeah.
If we could, Bill, Tom's parcel maps. Can't you take a peek at your set of maps? Because I think.
I pulled what I had from the I've got a one of two and two of two that I've only got two copies, though I'll give you what I got. But this is, this is what they included with their application.
Is Exhibit A what's on the Mylar?
Thank you.
That's on file right now?
This is what I remember.
Yeah, see, I remember, didn't they do some kind of a little building in here? There was some kind of, that's what I remember.
Right.
Not so much the right-of-ways, I don't, because I thought this solved that problem.
Maybe it did.
Yeah, that's, the right-of-ways are in there.
In there, okay.
And so that's this. Okay, so there's the reserve building and that's this, but then there's this little parcel here.
Yeah, and I don't remember that. I just.
You know, it's long enough back, I don't have a clear recollection of it anyway.
Where's number two on this original map, Bill? In Exhibit A?
I gave you my copy of my originals, so I don't have them.
I think it must be in there. Let's see, there. Isn't that the two?
These are shows.
So whose is that?
This is a circle. There's one clear circle and.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
I think that's the two.
But I think, I thought two was the parcel that housed the reserve center, but that's marked on three.
That's on three? Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, the new one, three is reserved, yeah.
The convey, one is depicted as muscle. Lands to be conveyed to Army Reserve. Yep. And owned by Maxell. You will note that there is a specific subdivision line between which is marked with lot one and lot four, yep, with a very small portion of lot four wrapping around, yep. It's conveyed to the around the southern line, lot three, which was conveyed to the Army Reserve. There's no mention of two, and I'm confused. Or did I just skip two? Where is two in all of this? Because two actually gives access to the Army Reserve, and that's the, that's the question that I was asking earlier in terms of my recollection. I thought that that had to be an easement or something, because it was landlocked.
Can I suggest we just table this thing and ask them to bring in something that we can, something we can read? And have somebody that wants to explain to us.
I struggle to ask stuff. It's so hard to follow what they're. Yeah, I read it twice myself, just to try to, oh, lot two. Okay, as a consequence.
Right.
That's his second-to-last paragraph. The only change that was made in 2022 to lot one was to cut off the northernmost portion and combine it with lot two. But who owns lot two? It doesn't say.
Oh. Looks like from this map that if that's the only circle that's unassigned.
Yep.
That couldn't possibly have tied in. That would have to tie in with Army Reserve.
Right, and that's why I had asked the question
Yeah.
two years ago about, doesn't this, if this doesn't belong to the Army Reserve, too, then isn't there need, doesn't there need to be a right-of-way or an easement?
Yeah.
To be able to get to Post Road.
Of course there has to be.
Right. And that was significant then, and I don't remember what the answer was to that.
I think, let's just get them back in and have them, have somebody give us something more than what we're looking at here.
Bill, do we have the original, do we have the original letter somewhere?
The letter does include PDFs of these two, which you can blow up, but.
You're talking about this?
Yeah.
I'm talking about. I'm talking about the previous letter, that when we were originally talking about this subdivision, back in 2022 or whenever. Because that would help me.
Is that what they're doing?
No, I want the letter that we originally received back in 2022, when we first started talking about the subdivision, the Orin Thomas subdivision.
The first, the very first letter is 2021.
All right, maybe that's the one, then.
Parcel two.
Let's do it.
Yeah, and I see you looking at Barb. Parcel two is right up the left-hand corner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it also is, it's the parcel that runs from Post Road up to reserves. But it runs up, yeah. And I think it has that boxed rectangle to the left. There's the corridor one, but it looks like there's also the box rectangle. I'm struggling to remember.
So what Tim Goss is suggesting is that we've taken, we've already taken the action that he describes, leading up to the last full paragraph. We just, I don't think a map, much less a Mylar, was ever submitted. And he's offering to do that?
I'd have to go back and check. Do we know what, when that was approved? I mean, we could check, go back and check the minutes. To double-check that, but I'm, I'm at a loss myself. And even though the boundary, the boundary line for lot two, parcel two, has expanded, it still doesn't provide access directly to parcel three, which is where the reserve center is.
The shape of this parcel here. I got the shape of the parcel here.
Or is it just turned differently? No. This is Post Road here.
Yeah.
This is this.
Road here, okay, so. It's just, so let's, that's why I think we ought to table it and just, let's get.
That's one parcel?
Whereas four, it's all one.
It's all Velco now, right?
Yeah.
That's all Velco.
Excuse me, I'm having trouble following. Is the yellow on the map that's on the screen, that outlines the existing parcels, that outlines the property we're now talking about?
Part of it. It does not represent one or four.
It's the, it's the part in question.
It represents parcels one or two and part of four.
But it's not latent, correct?
Say that again, Norman?
For purposes of following Jim's letter, the numbers that appear on it
I read it online.
Have nothing to do with the letter, correct? They don't identify the parcels.
Right. His numbers don't, don't, don't line up to these numbers.
I'm sorry?
What Jim's asking, if the numbers in Jim's, his designations are the same as these, and they're not.
Okay.
These are his, and these are what we have, so.
Did you hear that, Norm?
Not completely, I'm sorry.
The numbers do not correspond between what's on the screen right now and what Jim gave us.
Yeah.
Apparently, but he's trying to do. They're ready to sell lot one, which is where the, where the solar stuff is going to go. And what he's saying is he just wants you to confirm on behalf of the planning commission that no further town subdivision approval is required to convey lot one in the configuration showing on Exhibit B. And that's the lot for the solar. And that's a separate lot. I don't there's no subdivision there. It's an existing lot. I don't, I don't see that there's any subdivision required.
Well, there might be a boundary line adjustment.
That's the lot that we see, you know.
Yeah, actually, looking at the parcel map, I think the parcel map is wrong. It's missing, it's missing this line right here. These are supposed to connect.
They're supposed to be, no, there's supposed to be a line dividing four from one.
Correct, over here.
Yeah, I can't see it because it's too far. It's not there, yep. Okay. Because I do remember that that was the, yeah, that part, that line has to come.
All right, right.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. If Andy, if Andy said, if I understood Andy, you said there should be, I'm looking at the exhibit B. And Andy said, if I understood incorrectly, there is a line dividing, okay, one and four, and that's just that little line at the bottom, near the bottom of the map. And four has a sort of a finger around it that goes around three. Is that what you're talking about, Andy? The little line right at the end?
Oh, no, I didn't. No, not at all.
Because that's the only boundary I see between one and four that you, you mentioned, if I heard you correctly.
I mentioned something. This is Dana. I mentioned something about that, but I don't think Andy did.
It was Dana, I believe, who mentioned it.
And all I'm saying is that there needs to be a line, a perpendicular line to that finger, Norman. Because on the map that Bill has displayed, it's in yellow and it's very faint. And I couldn't tell whether that line, the boundary line on one, separating it from three, extended down to the back boundary of four. And he says it does, so that's a mistake.
Well, on the, on, on the maps that we received in the mail, well, from Bill, which are fairly difficult to read, on both of those maps, there is a line that, as far as I can see it, that separates one and four.
That's correct.
That is correct, Norm. It's just, it's, it's not on the town parcel map.
So it needs to be corrected on the town parcel map?
The census is initially subdivided into these four lots. It's like, just, you need to add a line. We're not doing a subdivision.
It's a boundary line adjustment.
Properties, the parcels are already there. We just got to draw a line to make that separation, I think.
Well, it's putting, it's making parcel two bigger than it was. And it's making parcel one smaller than it was. So I think that that qualifies as a boundary line adjustment.
When they say current, they, it's not, that's not what it is. Their map that says current is not current. Number Exhibit B is actually what it is now. So he may have gotten his label backwards.
Incredibly important thing here, and that's, that's something that we should, the surveyor would have to clarify that. It should be on the map someplace.
Madam Chair, what I would recommend, I agree kind of with, I agree in part with what Andy was saying in terms of tabling this. But I think in addition to that, they should come in and explain to us what we can't figure out ourselves. Yes. And so there may not need to be additional work, but we're not responding to this letter saying it's all good to go. Because we don't understand what they have presented us with. So have somebody come in, talk to us, talk it through, and we will give them guidance about what, what's needed.
And with, with, with something we can read also. It's more legible than this.
Okay, so.
A motion, Dana.
Yep.
I'd make, okay, now I gotta think about it. So move, I want to give Bill a little bit of direction, so that he doesn't have to try to parcel it out, excuse my pun, based on what I said in three different statements. So I would make a motion, Madam Chair, to communicate to Mr. Goss, that we need an explanation at an upcoming meeting of what they are actually proposing, because we can't approve something that we don't understand, based on the information that's been presented to us.
Is there a second?
Second.
Plus, we have different maps all over the place.
Yeah, this is confusing. This is really.
Wait, can we just add to that, that we like maps that we can, that are more legible, that we can read? Can we hold that for a second? Can we hold that? It was not part of the original motion.
I think it was.
No, it was not. No. No. I made the original motion. I, I, I want to just vote on the original motion. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I thought we discussed it. Norm, we're in the discussion stage here.
I was just, I think the motion can be stated more succinctly.
Feel free, Norman. I'll take a, if you can do it more succinctly than I, more power to you.
I will give it my best shot, if I may.
Absolutely.
I, I suggest that the motion read, that we request Mr. Goss to provide materials to appear with materials that clarify the relief he is seeking. It is not clear from what we have received from him. And that we don't understand this, I don't think we need that. I think just request that Mr. Goss will provide appear with
Materials.
With, with materials that clarify exactly what they mean, what he want, exactly what relief he is requesting from us.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got two motions on the floor.
I am happy to withdraw my motion if the commission believes that Norman has been more succinct and is clearer to Mr. Goss.
Obviously.
Obviously, okay, well. I will withdraw my motion.
Amen.
Howard's second.
Howard, do you?
I agree.
Agree? Okay, there you go. The first motion has been withdrawn.
Okay. So we've got the more succinct motion on the floor. Any discussion of that one? All those in favor?
I would just, just to maybe be cover something that we hadn't, didn't cover exactly. If we could indicate that we would like something that's that is clear and easier to read. I hate for him to come with these.
Right, okay. Yeah, I think, yeah, I don't think that needs to be part of the motion, but it can be part of the directive that Bill gives.
Exactly.
And then I would like it to be an in-person discussion, rather than just another set of materials that we will have to wade through and potentially have more questions.
Yeah, and that the next meeting is the 23rd, if you can make it. So we're ready to vote on the motion. All of us in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. All set, Bill?
Yep.
All right, that's, yeah. Down to old business. So we were going for Forest Parks and Rec. It's actually a federal grant that is being administered by Forest Parks and Rec with the state. We got past the first hurdle, so we've been invited to do the full application, and that's due at the end of the month. It's a little more in-depth. And they've already highlighted some of their concerns. And it's, it mostly revolves around this brand-new form that they're using, the climate resilience risk form. And they haven't done this before, so they're not quite sure. They think they've got it where they want it to be. But I, you know, I, I think they, they may change some things, but in the meantime, they're very concerned about the park. Almost, well, all of the park would be in the flood hazard zone. Some of it's in the floodway, which is really cool. Which gets flooded first. So they've let us know that they would like included in, in the application, our plan for maintaining features that, that we've put into the park, and whether that, those, the maintenance would include, or the design even, would include ditching, water bars, culverts and drains to be checked and cleared multiple times per year. And all other features to be checked, maintained yearly or bi-yearly. A plan for addressing invasive species and how to avoid spreading. I think we've got that covered. Because we have a pretty extensive plan to go in and identify the invasives, get them out and plant native plants. And include, please include your plan of how you will close the resource after a major rain or flooding event. So, so among other things.
Put the yellow tape and say, do not cross. A rough spot.
Do not enter. Enter at your own risk. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's interesting. I mean, Simon's Avenue right there is in the flood hazard area.
And everybody lives there.
Despite, you know, the incline from the river on up to Simon's Avenue, even, even into most parts of the proposed park. Yeah, Howard.
The kayak launching, that's not part of this now, is it?
We took that out.
That's gone, that's out.
Yeah, we took it out and we're looking at, I don't know where the maps are. So we're looking at just what the parcel, just what was conveyed to the town. And has that been done, Bill? All right, we've got a deed and we've got, and an easement has been drafted? Okay, great.
I'll deal return.
Right.
Hopefully, that kayak thing is a dead issue. I was talking with somebody, guy's probably in his 80s. He says he's fished down there on this strip all his life. He fishes the rapids because that's, that's where he, he wants to fish. He said there is no way. No way that anybody's going to launch anything in that, but they're going to be in trouble. In fact, he suggested going to the river that comes from Castleton and go over there and try to put a launch in, he said, but absolutely no way. And we've heard it before. We've heard concerns. So apparently, I mean, you can see the rapids on the photo here. That water is moving.
Yeah.
When I was in Florida, I kayaked a lot. I would never put a kayak in there, except if I was going downstream and had somebody pick me up. Because I don't believe a good kayaker could, could come, could make any headway against that current. You can paddle about three and a half to four miles an hour, but you're going to be tired out in a big hurry.
But the danger, I guess, of just trying to get into it.
Oh, yeah, it's hard, hard to get in a canoe and, I mean, into a kayak unless it can be.
Oh, yeah, it's hard to, hard to get in a canoe and, I mean, into a kayak unless it can be on something flat and step into it.
So we redid the design for this, and it does not include the, the, uh, the launch was going to be in what is the AOT right-of-way on the north end?
Mm-hmm.
And almost up at the Business Route Four. So none of, none, nothing in the right-of-way is included in the park design right now. Uh, so no launch. There is a, a, a loop, a loop trail, um, about seven hundred and something linear feet long.
Seven hundred and fifty, yep.
And, you know, the overlook and the picnic tables up above are still there, and the trail down to where the Fisher people go. So that, that's where we're at with the design. The, the boat line is, is out.
Good.
Are there two entrances? One near Route Four and one in?
Just one entrance now.
One entrance.
In one parking lot.
Where is the length of the, um, recreational loop indicated? It's not on the map.
On this map here.
It's on.
It is?
It's, I don't know what map you're looking at, but.
Yeah, I'm looking at that one. But where's the, where's the length?
The length of it says right.
It says right. It says a little white box.
Little box up on Simon's Avenue.
Oh, loop approximately seven fifty.
Approximately a loop, yeah.
I, I was looking in the, in the, um, legend of above. Yep.
It's right where Simmons Avenue is.
That's only about one point, uh, point five, one five of a mile.
So, and we also, let's see, so we, for this particular grant, um, we, we're asking at this point, and, and, and the budget can change a little bit too. There's, we'll be having some meetings with Forest Parks and Recs about, um, about this next phase. Um, but we are asking for a total project cost of forty-one point six, forty-one, six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Um, and from the grant, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty would come from the grant, and the, the town match would be ninety-nine hundred.
It doesn't matter.
Excuse me?
Yeah, it does.
I thought you said twenty-two thousand. How much were you asking?
Thirty-one, seven fifty.
We're at, we're asking for thirty-one thousand and seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, I, I understand.
Adding, adding ninety-nine, nine thousand, nine hundred dollars in total match would be mostly, um, like the highway crew, some volunteer time. So the total project cost right now is, uh, forty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-two, six fifty-three. Um, and the max was fifty thousand dollars for this grant.
Well, that, that's where I got confused. We had twenty-two thousand from the grant. Well, you said forty-one thousand roughly, we would, is the cost. We were getting twenty-two thousand from the grant. The town's match was nine thousand, which is thirty-one, and where's the balance coming from?
Um, see, we're, we're asking for thirty-one point seven, Norm.
Okay.
That's from the grant.
Okay, thirty-one, thirty-one point seven, and then nine thousand more from the town?
Yeah, and that pretty much adds up to forty-one thousand.
Okay, I did not hear, I hear that in the beginning. I heard.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
No.
So that's match of twenty-four percent, which is pretty good. Um, we are, we, we put in thirty-five hundred dollars in case a archaeological review will be needed, which is most likely will be needed, even after all of the work that was done for the federal relicensing, uh, for Green Mountain Power. The state was not completely satisfied, um, with what the consultants came up with, uh, for Green Mountain Power. They thought there was more there. Um, and, um, that could include the area we're looking at, uh, for the park. We, uh, for the grant project administration, um, we put in, uh, a bill for project coordinator, eighty hours there, and some ta, uh, us, the planning commission, um, oversight for trailside and trailhead amenities. Uh, we can invite people in and talk about those. Um, for construction, uh, town work crews to cut dead trees, remove debris, install, install signage and redo parking, a contracted landscaper for identifying and removing invasives and planting, and a planting plan, and consultation with town and stakeholders regarding native species replacements. And also under construction, a contracted trail builder for the loop and picnic area and for restoration of existing trails. Um, and then some construction equipment rental from the town, you know, wood chipper, dump trucks, excavator. And, uh, from construction materials, uh, we've got some money in there for trailside and trailhead kiosk and other signage. So that's, yeah, so that, that's what got us past the first hurdle. Now we'll deal with what the federal government wants. Um, there's a lot of endangered species, um, questions in the grant as well as these for the climate resilience, the flooding. So if anyone has any ideas on, um, how to word or what we should do, um, about, especially about the flooding, uh, I'm all ears. And once again, uh, the grant is, the deadline is the thirty-first of January. Any questions?
Who's helping you?
Um, I do have a meeting on the fourteenth with Mary Ashcroft and, uh, Mike Rowe. And I thought I should ask Mike Rowe to the meeting because, um, this, this, it's not just filling out the application. If we get the money, there's going to be a lot, quite a bit of ongoing work. With the maintenance and with keeping records up this, up, you know, up to date and all that sort of thing. So I just thought it'd be good to familiarize him, um, with, with what might be coming down the pike and get any ideas he had. And Mary has been, um, I've been checking in with Mary, uh, periodically since the beginning of this, with the different stages and things.
I'd be happy to help or review if you want to be, um, the wording. Um, I am thinking, you know, we live near there and, um, have observed it during flood events, and when the, um, the water got so high that it almost went over, um, Business Route Four at the crossing there. Um, it didn't actually flood that, the park area. The water came up really high, but, um, and that was a pretty bad flood. So I don't think it actually floods very often, but, um, yeah, I think talking to Mike about how to close that during flooding and in addition to the ma, the maintenance, it's a good idea.
Has anyone ever seen, uh, the, the park area flooded?
I haven't seen it, but I've, I've been told that the water gets, you know, way up close to the bridge when it's really, really flooding, which it seemed like you would put that underwater.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it gets, it, it, it would get up to the base of the bridge, the floor of the bridge. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be close.
That's the root.
The only issue, pardon me.
Is that the root of the bridge?
Just a minute, Norm.
The only issue would be the picnic tables, really. There isn't gonna be anything else, so.
Right.
And, and there is no evacuation problems because there's not gonna be a fence keeping anyone, if the water starts to rise, keeping anyone from just walking away. I don't see an issue there myself. We just have to put the picnic tables up where they're on the highest ground.
Which.
And possibly anchor them somehow.
Yeah.
Or, or would they be a type of picnic table that could be anchored and, and stay in place?
Mm-hmm. Norm?
No, question was answered. Thank you.
Yeah, that should be easy enough. And that is the highest piece of ground right there.
Yeah.
And, you know, even the loop, the trails were, they were not gonna be primitive, but it was going mostly gravel. Um, and there wouldn't be that much of a loss if some of that got washed away.
Um, I've been talking a little bit with, uh, Hen Hill Park. They're doing some trails. Um, it's an existing soccer field where part of the, the trails are, but it is in the flood hazard area. Um, and the feedback that they got was, uh, making sure, you know, that gravel is fine. You know, they're doing ADA compliant trails, um, but that it would need to be flush with the ground. Um, so the, where the gravel ends up would be level so that you wouldn't, um, increase the elevation at all, basically.
So is that for, i- in order for the water to drain? Is that why it would be flush?
Yeah, and then if it did flood, that, um, there would still be as much flood storage available. I mean, not that it be, would be that much, but, um.
And, and why is that? Just for the ADA compliant trail sections?
So it's because of using gravel there, because there's a distinction between, um, just the grass or soil. As soon as you start putting gravel in, uh, like kind of a hardened surface, that's when, um, it kind of goes to another level of scrutiny. Not that you shouldn't do it, you know, that would be a good thing to do, but, um, it's considered kind of a different category. It's a, now it's a hard.
Is this supposed to be semi-imperious? Is that why?
Right, and that, I think that's part of it, um.
Because it doesn't drain as quickly as, uh, as soil or grass or sand?
Right, and just something that you need to, that would get washed away that you would need to replace versus if it was just grass or soil.
Should this park be closed? I'll look under, you know, high water times, nothing for safety or?
Yeah, I mean, at, at one point, a couple of years ago, we were talking about maybe getting solar-powered signage that would alert people when, you know, when it was at flood stage or, you know, or they, they were thinking it was gonna be at flood stage.
Park is closed.
Um, you know, that's a little bit expensive, and it hasn't been included in any of this signage yet. Oh. Might be, it, it probably would be an add-on of some sort, how we would, yeah, how we would advertise that, unless we want to squeeze it in, uh, into the final application somehow.
Does it need to be that sophisticated?
Doesn't need.
Where it's automatic?
No, I don't think so.
Describe a, a procedure where someone.
It's gonna be fairly obvious when the water's rising.
Well, where someone goes and, and puts up a, a temporary sign.
Yeah. Mary Beth, what do you think of temporary flood signs?
Yeah.
Do they work?
Hmm. Yeah, I mean, you know, just, um, I definitely talked to Mike Rowe about it. You know, it is on that other side of town from Northwood Park, um, where the staff would be, but. Well, and then another option, um, like there is one neighbor, you know, I live nearby. There's another neighbor that, um, maybe we could have like a volunteer assist. Uh, a volunteer group.
Mm-hmm.
That might be part of emergency management too, like Marty, maybe.
Yeah.
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 That, to close that, but.
Good guy.
Or, or just, we're gonna have a kiosk with a sign, I think we decided there anyway, and just maybe putting like a part of the sign like, this area has and can't flood, you know, pay attention to rising water and, like, you're on risk, like, just.
Yeah, there's definitely gonna have to be some legal language.
Yeah.
Included. Right, Norm? Um.
I would think so.
And for the signage, right now is, I was thinking of the kiosk, which could have, could be two side, would be two-sided, hopefully, uh, with plenty of room to put general information there, and then maybe two or three additional signs. Um, probably in that overlook area, maybe one, um, down in the loop trail, um, about the history, industrial history, maybe indigenous history, um, wartime, civil, uh, revolutionary wartime history. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff we could do. And, and that was the idea of, for getting stakeholder groups together to figure out what the text would be for those signs.
Are we still moving the trough over there?
That, that is not in the cards right now. We could, we could, we could possibly add that in, um, to this grant. I think there's, if they'll let us go above the forty-one thousand. But it would still be going to the AOT, you know, right away. So just, yeah, it gets a little more complicated.
Now it's not doing it any favors, so.
No, no, it doesn't. But yeah, thank you for reminding me of that one. So in full disclosure, um, this, there's a, there's enough work here that, um, I'm, I'm using some of my regional, the Rutland Regional Plan time to work on this as well. A little bit of both.
Public property or?
I think that's, unless there's any other suggestions or questions. Mary Beth, thank you for your insights and offer.
Sure.
Okay, um, on to the River Corridor ordinance. We talked about, um, looking at sections one through five. Norm, um, sent me a list of comments, and I'm open to hearing anything you folks have about those sections. Um, Norm's general comments, if I could read those, Norm, if it's okay.
Sure, or I can just, you know about everybody and not take up too.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it's, it's, uh, quickly, it's just moving the definitions, um, moving them up to the front. Um, Norm had some questions about the del, the Development Review Board. Um, what smaller towns without zoning have done, um, and this is allowed by statute, is to use a smaller, less formal group called the Board of Adjustment that the Select Board assigns the members of, um, to take, um, anything that the zoning officer, the ZO, uh, wants help with.
But in this case, it's the administrative officer.
Administrative officer, yes, sorry. The AO.
So Norm, when Norman, Norman, when you said something about moving the definitions up, I did not see any definitions per se.
They're in back.
They're in back. They're not part of the first.
They're at, they're at the end of the proposed ordinance.
Oh, definitions. Yeah, they need to be.
It'd be nice if they were in front.
Yeah, that's, I, I would agree.
Or if there was a reference that they're back there.
Well, right. I had a.
Yeah, but it's just, it's hard to work with.
And there's no, there, there is no consistency in how they're presented.
Right.
Sometimes the, um, the first use is spelled out and they include the, uh, abbreviation. Sometimes it's not and you have to try to figure it out.
Keep that comment because not everything is back there anyway.
Right. And so those, my, my comment was that they need to be either any abbreviations need to be either stated each time or they need, there needs to be an upfront. Yep. Designation of what those abbreviations mean. And that could be with the definitions. Um.
Yes.
But yeah, and particularly if the definitions are definitions of terms for which there is an abbreviation, the abbreviation should be included among them. And, uh, I mean, it would be fine by me, as you suggested Sherman, to say definitions found at the back of this, in section whatever or appendix whatever. And then you can go back and refer to that. Because otherwise you wade through, now that I've looked at it, you've got three.
Four or five pages.
Four and a half pages of definitions. I, I don't know that people want to wade through that much.
It's the way most statutes and regulations are, are written is the definitions come up front. So you know what you're getting to. Um, and you know, it's not critical in terms of whether the ordinance is desirable or not, but it's just what I'm used to, I guess, uh, from working with this stuff for years.
Doesn't matter to me. They just need to be, any abbreviation that is used.
I agree that the abbreviations should be included either in the definitions or prior to the definitions. Um.
In the same section. Yep. I would agree with that.
Yep.
That's not a question for Kyle though.
Right.
Right. So I did check in with Mount Holly, which passed this ordinance, the model standalone bylaw about three years ago. And it was before the flooding. In the summer flooding of, was it twenty, what, twenty-one, twenty-two in Ludlow? Where Mount Holly did get some flooding too. So the timing was pretty fortuitous. Um, but, um, I was asking about, you know, whether they have a, a board of adjustment. And, uh, they do, but it's hardly been used because the, the person who has been assigned to be the A O, the administrative officer, has been, been able to do most of the work. Uh, that has come forward or answered the questions or make the decisions, say, you know. You're exempt, you're not exempt, you need this permit. You're all set. So are there any, is there anything else, um, that we might want to ask Kyle or, or anything else, Norm?
Yeah, I just thought if you're going to send out my comments, I ought to expand on one thing briefly, if I may. Of course, it was not clear to you and you and I went back forth on it, back and forth on it. Uh, I had some reservations about the, um, board of adjustment. It wasn't clear to me who was going to be, uh, members of it. And my concern, and Barbara and I emailed back and forth. Uh, my concern was I don't think it's appropriate, given how much uh, we were, how closely we worked with Bill for the planning commission. Uh, to have a majority on the board of adjustment. It, it might imply a lack of impartiality. So that, that was my reservation. I mean, we're very, we're very much, if it's an appeal of a decision we make, of course, we shouldn't sit on it. And if it's an appeal of decision that Bill makes, I just think for fairness purposes, we should not be majority.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So I just wanted, I, I just wanted that to be clear if you do send out my comments.
And statute says the select board, um, selects the members, the board of adjustment. They can be the planning commission or they can be members of the planning commission and others.
Yeah, I think you, you made that, you know, clear as well, but I thought everybody should understand where I was coming from. Which is often hard to follow.
Yeah, I had a, oh, I, I thought of, I had questions directly for the, the way this was written, but I had other questions that I thought were not for, were, were talent questions, our problems and, and, and other questions that were both. And one I had was, uh, how is the administrative officer expected to identify development? Or I mean, I, I, let me back up and I, I can be more broad. How is the administrative officer expected to do this? Is it going to be something where they go and, 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 and constantly look for, look for problems that are underway? Or is there some process where they can be identified? We don't have, our permitting, it's not exactly as, as well defined as some of this implies. It, it would need to be. So I, in, in thinking about how it would be done, I wasn't sure how, how it would be done. And, and, and basically it comes, probably comes down to, to zoning. Uh, because the implication here is that, that, that there's zoning and that if someone, if there's a any, any property movement that also the question of what's going to be done with it is part of that process. And we don't have that as part of our process where.
Yeah. I mean, I think it would be a lot like how we deal with the moon brook. Uh, watershed ordinance that we have. Uh, and Bill, you, you don't go out and look for things you.
I have.
You have.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So that's, that's one method that could be used here if the A O had time to go see these things. But you also get a lot of questions and requests that just get come into your office.
Yep.
That would handle some of this stuff.
Uh, under administration in section seven, page twelve, which wasn't on our list of things to do. Does say that the administrative officers shall be appointed to administer this bylaw pursuant to the A O shall administer this bylaw literally. And in doing so, shall inspect the development, maintain records, enforce this bylaw and perform all other necessary tasks. Carry out the provisions of this bylaw and the statutory requirements. The A O shall not have the power to permit any land development that is not con- in conformance with this bylaw. So it says, it seems to imply.
Okay, go ahead.
That he does everything.
Yes.
Including inspections. And so it's.
Yes.
Maybe doesn't, maybe doesn't specify how proactive.
Yeah, well, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and somewhere in, in throughout we, I guess I don't have it written here, but if there's a subdivision, it, it implies that if, if there's a subdivision, we know what's going to be done in that subdivision and that may initiate something.
Yeah.
If there's nothing, nothing identified, but our sub, we don't, we don't, if they're going to build, build on it, we don't necessarily know. A- as a result of the subdivision.
Yeah, we, because there's a building notice needs to be filed.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's not part of this.
And there's supposed to be.
But you can go through the subdivision without that.
Oh, absolutely.
But, and vice versa.
Any building over so many square feet, right, Bill?
There were five hundred.
Pardon? Hundred square feet. So only a ten by ten building, which is really no more than a shed.
So that we catch anything that we wouldn't, we wouldn't see in the subdivision.
Right.
And some of it may be exempt. If it's an outbuilding.
Yes, yes.
In certain circumstances.
In certain some, yeah, to be determined.
Based on the criteria. Okay. So.
I am, Sherman, were you done?
Yes, I'm done with that.
Okay.
Um, besides the comments that I already made, um, on the table on page two, there are blank spots. Where nothing is indicated and I just had a question about those.
So like spill or grading, uh, seven and eight?
River corridors, nothing. Flood hazard area is C and floodway is nothing.
So, um, so, so the columns are, does, does the river corridor apply to these development features? Um, or flood hazard areas, does that apply or the floodway? So the blanks would be there in, for seven and eight, the river quarter doesn't apply.
And I put in N A.
Yeah. And the floodway wouldn't apply for number seven.
That's fine. Then we just need to put an N A as opposed to leaving a blank, I think.
Okay.
I mean, that, that would satisfy my curiosity. Um, page three. Uh, uh, D. Development review in river corridors, um, section one exempted activities, D. Um, I, I just put a question mark because it seems convoluted. And if there could be a simple explanation of what that means, that would be great.
Uh, D un- under one, under C? Or?
Yeah, yeah. So C, well, I guess what section are we in? Four, C, one, D.
Okay.
I guess is the actual reference. Um.
Dana?
Uh, the other one, um, it says, it's F, same, same section, four. Four, uh, C, one, F. Subdivision of land that does not involve or, uh, or authorized development. I'd like just an explanation of what that.
Okay.
What that means. I understand what it says. I want to know the implications of it. Um, let's see. Uh, page four. Under two prohibited development in river corridor. So we're now looking at, um, four, four C, two. Um, it says prohibited development in the river corridor, new structures, blah, 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 any, any other development. And then it says, um, three, oh, oh, sorry. I guess my question was on uh, four, C, three.
What page are you on? I'm sorry.
Four.
Okay.
Permitted by administrative review, the following development activities meet, meeting the developmental standards in the river corridor and section. Uh, D one, D two may be permitted directly by, never mind, I don't have a question to answer myself.
Just a list of what can be done directly.
Well, yeah, the thing is, I guess it was, I was confused. Okay. I thought it was under two and it was prohibited development, but this is a new section. So it permitted, anyway. Uh, more questions about, uh, definitions and, uh, abbreviations, um, okay, D one. It talks about the gap and I had the same problem, uh, when we were first reviewing these. Um, it's, so for.
Page five?
Page five. Uh, four, D one. Uh, infill. Uh, development must be located no closer to the top of the bank, makes sense, than the existing primary structures, makes sense. Within a gap that is no more than three hundred feet. Gap of what?
The space between a new structure and the existing structure.
That should be cle- more clearly identified than.
I still mind bother those sketches and everything.
I had questions about both of those.
Same thing. I, I just need an explanation here. Yeah, not clear. When you say both of those, uh.
Figure two also.
Okay, I, I've got that circled. So I, I think we both have questions about, uh, one and two. You're talking about the Downriver Shadow, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I said explain. Yep. So I, those two areas for both me and, uh, Sherman, I think need to be um, clarified.
I had several questions that I went through this that were answered. You know, the next page or the next paragraph.
What page are you on, Sherman?
Five.
We were five.
Anything else, Dana?
Uh, I've got a question on page six.
And then just quickly back to the, those two figures. I mean, I think that's something that we are going to have to, you know, develop, you know, the skill set to, and Bill's going to need the skill, skill set. And the public is going to have to be a little bit patient with us in trying to explain, explain these.
I just want it clear for myself, what it is we're talking about. Yeah, what's it mean? Yep, same question, Sherman. Uh, okay, page six, um, or it's, um, under two base flood elevations and floodway limits. Um, uh, I, I, uh, C, two C. It says in the S F H A where the base flood elevation, blah, blah, blah. Uh, flood insurance study and accompanying maps, it's the applicant's responsibility to develop the necessary data. What's the implication of that?
Um, hiring, hiring an engineer to get the base flood elevation data.
Okay, I think that that should be then spelled out.
Which is pretty, it, that, that's in our flood plain ordinance now, I believe.
Then we should reference the flood plain ordinance. I, I think it's just, it's, it's too much for somebody to have to try to wrap their mind around. Um.
Well, it goes hand in hand with building in a flood hazard area.
Uh, sure, but you should know what it says rather than having to go try to figure it out.
If, if we, if we're struggling with it, it's only going to get worse.
That's the point. And we can say that it, it goes with building in a flood area. Sure. But they should know what the implications are rather than having to read something that sounds like gobbledygook and they could easily ignore. And then it comes to us and we've got a problem. So, anyway. Um, I, I'm curious on the next page. So under developmental requirements, so that's D. Uh, two exempted activities, interior improvements or repairs to existing buildings that cost less than five hundred dollars.
Uh, that got me too.
It got you too?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What, what the hell is this? Why is five hundred dollars? That seems like an arbitrary figure. What's?
Could be a FEMA thing.
Well, I, I just like to know. Do you want an explanation on that too, Howard?
Yeah, that, that trouble makes it. I mean, you know, what's this for? Somebody wants to do some painting in the house or something or what?
Yeah.
Or what's, you know, five hundred dollars.
And it's not changing the footprint. I mean, everything else was talking about the footprint. And if you're not making changes, what difference does it make?
These are exempted.
But it's only exempted up to five hundred dollars. If it's five hundred and one dollars, all of a sudden it's not exempted. And so I'm thinking, why, what difference does it make if you're making an interior adjustment? And you want to hang, you want to hang Monets or Renoise or something and it's going to cost you three thousand dollars? That's up to you to decide. It's not changing the footprint, right? I mean, I, I don't know why that.
It's almost saying anything that's done.
Yeah, but yeah, it, on the one hand, it says that you can change, you can do anything. It doesn't, if it doesn't change the footprint. And now you're putting a dollar limit on it. It says anything more than a can of paint.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know. And maybe we can change that. Maybe that's something that's subject.
We should put footprint and exterior profile.
Well, you know, my concern, my concern with that.
Leave the interior alone.
Right, because that'll allow you to do anything inside like changing petitions.
Yeah.
Whatever. But by, by putting down that you can't change the building profile.
Yeah.
Means you can't change the roof lines, add a second story.
Actually, it did leave that open if it wasn't expanding the, uh, original, uh, foundation.
So then you could leave, then in which case then we take it, we don't, we don't put the profiles part in and take the money part out.
Yeah, take the money part out, I mean.
Norm?
Well, I just had a couple of concerns. Um, first of all, Dana, uh, Barbara, are you going to send these comments to the? First of all, Dana, Barbara, are you going to send these comments to the gentleman before he comes down so he can address them?
I'll, yep.
Yes.
Um, Dana, you know, you've got a very extensive and thoughtful list and I would, it might be better to, if you had time, to put it in writing, uh, so that he has this information when he comes down, can think about it and the meeting is more productive. And I think that goes for anybody. Um, uh, the, the lot.
For Norman, the, the question was, we were having a discussion tonight, so I made sure I had all my questions written down, but not typed up and submitted because I didn't have time.
Yeah.
If it were next week, I might have had time.
Well, I, I understand that and it, I'm not sure I heard everything you said. My sound is not clear tonight, but I just think it would, in order to make the best use of this gentleman's time, I don't know whether he's coming in person or he's going to do it by Zoom. But if he had our concerns, uh, logically put out, as I'm sure you can outline, it would be helpful to all of us.
I think that's the next stage.
Next stage.
Good point, Norm. Anything else, Dana?
Uh, on page nine, developmental standards within the flood hazard area. Uh, no net loss of flood storage capacity, except, and that's one, and then A says except as needed to fill in existing basement or mitigate an existing structure. I just asked for an explanation in in simple terms of what that, what that language means, because if I don't know what it means, I can't explain it to somebody. You're with me, uh, Sherman?
Yep, 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 yep.
Okay, um, I have all kinds of notes about definitions, but that's all I can take care of. Um, there is a, um, a question that I have. On page 10, uh, it is, uh, structural standards number 11, subparagraph C. New and substantially improved structures in zone A O. What does that mean?
It's a FEMA zone. That zone.
Can that be added as a, a, a clarification?
What do you, well, um.
I mean, in parentheses, say FEMA map, whatever, just because for me, that doesn't mean, I mean, maybe it's in there as zone A O in the definitions, which I didn't go back and look at. Um, but I don't see it.
Yeah, this, I mean, this is something a property owner should know if they're in the flood hazard area. Are they in the A O zone, are they in another zone? So, I mean, some of the stuff. Bill will keep.
Building permit, which if they're doing, you know, any interior renovation, adding a bedroom, things like that are adding on. The informational building permit, uh, has that on there as a requirement already to find that, to find that information out.
Uh, I think it would be, um, it would be helpful for a novice for that to say FEMA flood, flood zone A O. And then they can go figure it out.
There, there's a, a similar problem, pardon me for interrupting, on page nine, paragraph E four. It says in zones A E and A one hyphen A 30, and I never saw that defined either.
Yeah, I, I had that same question, I, I missed it, but thank you, yep.
Yeah.
I had the same question, Norm.
I should have known.
He's keeping me honest, I went past that for some reason. Um, there's also another term that I couldn't find defined as F I R M, the community's firm.
It's the flit, flit, um, it's a map.
Okay.
Firm. Um, what does it stand for, but it's a FEMA map.
Okay.
It's the official FEMA map.
Flood insurance, something.
Rate map, yeah.
Once, once again, uh, that goes back to my question about any of the acronyms that are put in there should be defined somewhere.
Is it, it may be in back.
Maybe in the back.
Yeah, I, I didn't see it. It's not, Neilman said it's not, so I trust Norm.
Again, but.
11. Um, so we're under, uh, I guess five. Five, what, five, uh, G, G, it's page 11, it's, uh, fully enclosed areas below the lowest floor. Uh, I don't know what D F E stands for. D E R is Department of Environmental Regulation, but I don't know what a D F E is. Anyway, um, it's, um, Roman numeral one. Be solely or small, you know, Roman numeral one, be solely used for parking, blah, blah, blah. Uh, and be designated to automatically equalize hydrostatic flood forces. I just wanted an explanation about that, I'm assuming that it means distributed, but, um, and reduce the, uh, impact, but, uh, that wasn't clear to me. Um, I think that's all I have. Yep, that's it.
Okay. Yes, it would be good if we knew the definition and we knew everything that they were referring to here. Um, some of it's going to be quite technical and kind of goes with the territory of, as I said before, developing in a flood hazard area. Uh, it is up to that person, that person is notified that the property is in a flood hazard area and it's up to that person to become versant in what FEMA requires. It, that, that's just part of this, yes, we should know what this is and we should be able to explain it. But a, a lot of the burden of of this is on the people trying, that they want to do the development. And rash, and this gives them the means to explain why it would fit or why it wouldn't fit. Why it would be safe and why it wouldn't be safe.
I, I don't have any, any objections, um, to the.
And there's some expense involved, there is expense involved for people trying to build in flood hazard areas.
Sure, I, I think the simpler it is, the more palatable it can be for people to understand. But what I have found throughout my educational career is when people don't understand something, they immediately reject something. And if we throw in jargon and terminology, it is a great way to obfuscate communications and to get people's hackles up so that they are going to resist it rather than comply. So, I mean, anything that we can do to make it more palatable or intelligible is in our best interest.
Yeah. Term is flood insurance rate map.
I'm sorry?
Term is flood insurance rate.
Thanks. I could have looked it up myself, but I was trying to get the questions now and they were just getting in my way.
And that's where the zones come in.
Yep.
Yeah, I was just looking at Mount Holly's, what, what they passed, what they've had in place and it's, it's, uh, see if they reworded any of this stuff or made it clear and they pretty much just took it as the state.
Uh, so, one of the things that I have also learned in my uh, administrative career is that when someone adopts a model policy directly, what happens is that things get omitted that shouldn't be omitted and explanations get omitted that would be helpful for people interpreting them. So, a- as a policy and procedure, uh, aficionado for the better part of a, uh, quarter century, I've always tried to emphasize with people working on policies and procedures to make them as legally transparent as possible and as, as clear in expectations on the procedural end as possible, so that people can follow it without being frustrated. And I think that with my level of experience, if I'm getting frustrated, I can only imagine how a homeowner might be getting frustrated on a 21-page document, so. I also noticed that there were a lot of, there was a lot of repetition. Now, the repetition may be necessary, but there was a lot of repetition of, uh, various um, expectations or provisions in different sections of the, uh, uh, document that we read through page, through section five. And sometimes that's just unavoidable.
Okay. Well, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
One and all. So we'll do, um, the next meeting, we'll do section six and seven. I think it goes into definitions after that, yeah. Uh, so we may want to do definitions, well, what, what might be missing.
Yep, and that's the last section, I think.
Yes.
So we just finish it.
Yeah. Great.
Barbara?
Yeah, Norm?
If one thing I, um, may have missed, I don't recall, but on page one in the beginning of the dive, of the columns, et cetera, it has flood hazard areas and I didn't see that defined in the definitions. And it just seems to me that those captions, because of the, on the summary table, ought to be very, very clearly understood.
Well, that would be the special flood hazard area and I think maybe just for space, they didn't put the special.
S P A, S P.
The S F H A.
S F H A. Well, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah.
Maybe if S, S F H A were in parenthesis underneath the word areas, that would make it clearer, or at least give somebody a, you know.
Mm-hmm.
One way or the other, it should be right up front, it's the whole.
Right. And, and that's the parts going to be used the most to that table.
Yeah.
Really is.
We do need to also include, um, the word Rutland in all of the blanks that appear for, um, the, uh, bylaw.
Mm-hmm. For sure.
They happen in a variety of different places. So, there are half dozen of them.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we move on to the minutes or announcements, anyone have any announcements?
There's no subdivision update tonight on Goodriches.
Uh, if you have one.
Uh, that, that was for me. Um, the Goodriches are withdrawing their subdivision, they're not going to file a M I L R, they are overwhelmed with their neighbors' comments, so they are, they're not. They're not filing M I L R, so the, of the approval will expire and nothing will change.
They, they will not.
On post-throw.
Yeah.
They will not file M I L R.
File M I L R, so the approval will just expire, nothing will change.
You know, I finally got the chance to take a look at where the driveway was going to be, just Wednesday, I guess it was, like, transfer station? That's a tough, tough, dangerous spot.
That, that was a minor issue compared to everything.
That was minor?
It's, it's, it's all, it's all done, doesn't matter.
But it wasn't, it wasn't the driveway access?
It's, it's, uh, yeah, they're, they're, so they're, they're, they just said they're not going to file a M I L R. Uh, so they weren't able to work through the issue, so they are just going to not, not do anything, so it'll naturally will just end.
Okay, yeah. That's unfortunate. Any other announcements? Let's take a look at the minutes for December 5th.
Move to approve the minutes from December 5th.
Second.
Thank you. They look good to me.
Yeah, I didn't find anything.
Okay.
It says it all.
All right, I think we're ready for the question.
Yep.
All those in favor of the minutes as presented by Bill Sweet? Say aye.
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 Post? Okay, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.